Meeting of the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen in or watch the meeting either online via the Town on Demand video broadcast, on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455, enter 1428 for the meeting number, and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active to the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance with members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcripts, or other comprehensive records of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, on the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, we'll have a moment of silence at 6:35, we have a public hearing for a login permit on Arnold Road, we have a permit application from Sardus Cafe for outdoor entertainment license, we have the town administrator's report, we have action items. Um, Tony? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hmm. I, there's no feedback?
I think there's a radio in the background. Chief, is your radio on?
Yeah, wait a minute. Give it a minute. Hey, Dowling? Come here.
No?
I, uh, hold on a second, I think I pushed down on something.
Okay.
Like something's ringing. My technician is here.
So this has, so I don't know, don't touch the guy?
I know, I mean, done it. His, his price is, uh, reasonable, and he lives close by.
There you go.
Okay. So, on the action items, we have a request from Sally Green to use the Sturbridge Senior Center, we have consideration and possible action on a request for a water bill abatement, we have consideration and possible concurrence of the appointment of Corey Gagir as a police officer, consideration and possible action on the request for the removal of a tree at the Sturbridge Public Safety Complex, consideration and possible action on accepting a donation to William Petro, consideration and possible action on approving a multi-year electricity purchase agreement, then we have old business, consideration and possible action on salary adjustments for the sergeant of the Sturbridge Police Department, Old Mill Pond dam update, COVID-19 update, new business correspondence approval minutes, gives me a July 6th citizens forum, and then we will adjourn. Um, public service announcements. Mary, do you have any? Case, do you have any?
I have none, thank you.
Ian, do you?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none. Okay, could we please have a moment of silence then for those who have died from the coronavirus and those also affected by it?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we do have right now a public hearing.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, Mary, we were just having technical difficulties, but...
That's okay, I had technical difficulties too. Okay, um, this is a public hearing for logging permitted, 208 Arnold Road, Anthony Grassi and John Clark. Um, Tony, you going to present?
Yes. Yeah, we, we have a, an approved plan to do a timber harvest for, uh, John Sugda, the address is 208, uh, Arnold Road, uh, the state forest approved the plan about a month ago, I've spoken to the town, uh, highway department, and they told me about the $5,000 bond, which I've done before, so I am in possession of that, and I sent Andrea a copy of it, and, um, I've met with Becky and Steve from Conservation, and we went for a nature walk and a sidewalk, and we looked at all the crossings, and, um, that's about it. So we have an approved plan, and we're just, um, here to answer questions.
Okay, any questions from the board? No? Okay, um, Tony, I know you have an approved forest cutting plan from the state, and the Conservation Commission has received a copy of it, um, we didn't, we don't have a copy, but I don't think that's your fault. Um, Jeff?
You didn't get a copy in the packet?
No.
You don't have a copy of the plan?
No, we have a copy of the plan, but we usually get a copy, um, of the, uh, approval from the state, DCR. Looks like a certificate.
Yeah, that was sent to Andrea.
I don't think I had that, I don't, if you could resend that, I sent it to the board, but that wasn't included in those documents.
Well, the Conservation has it, so we know it's a valid, uh, forest cutting plan and approval, and, uh, we have a letter from Becky, from the Conservation, that they have no problems with it. So, the board, no other questions or comments?
I just have, um, one. This is the same plan that the, they are requesting us to hold a public hearing, um, for their consideration, right? Um, because it's on their agenda coming up, it's on the project, it's on the August 4th Conservation Commission meeting agenda. I know one memo says they don't have any concerns, and then the other memo...
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
I'm sorry, this is all the same forest cutting plan, correct? That I'm reading about? I guess Jeff can answer my question, because at the bottom of the July 16th memo, the requested action is for us to hold the public hearing and consider it, um, I guess, based on their August 4th meeting, I don't know, Jeff, maybe you can address that?
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, the Conservation Agent and members of the board have reviewed this proposal, and as Becky, General Conservation Agent, has said, uh, they have no concerns, but the, the full board has not discussed this yet in a meeting. Um, so they're gonna have it on their August 4th agenda. My recommendation to the board this evening is hold the public hearing and consider approving the proposed forest cutting plan for 208 Arnold Road, subject to the terms and conditions of the town's forest harvesting bylaw and the recommendations of the Conservation Commission, which allows the applicant to get an approval here from the board, subject to any further conditions imposed by the Conservation Commission after their August 4th meeting.
Okay, that's reasonable, as long as we add to the motion, subject to whatever they recommend at their August 4th meeting, I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah, well, it's written that way.
Yeah, no, I know.
It is a public hearing.
The board.
So Jeff, is there anyone on the phone?
Let me check. Good evening, is there anyone on the phone to talk about the, uh, forest cutting plan for 208 Arnold Road? The forest cutting plan for 208 Arnold Road, is there anyone who wish to participate in the public hearing? There's no one on the call, and there's no email on the public comment email.
Okay, somebody willing to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move, Mary, Mary Dowling.
Second, Chase.
Okay, how do you vote, Ian?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Case, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, somebody wanna make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to hold, uh, to approve the proposed forest cutting plan for 208 Arnold Road, subject to terms and conditions of the town's forest harvesting bylaw and recommendations of the Conservation Commission, Chase.
I'll second Chase's motion.
Okay. Are you wary at, um, their recommendation at their upcoming August 4th meeting? Does that actually have...
Yep.
Okay, Ian, you okay on the second?
Yes, yes.
Adding the date? Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Case?
Chase, yes.
Case, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Mike, you weren't here for the public hearing, so...
I have to, I have to.
And I vote yes, Mary, okay. Okay, Tony, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming in visually.
Thanks again, and Andrea, I sent you that cutting plan just now as well.
I think that's the same plan that I provided them, but I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Andrea, I can, um, I'm sure we have some on file, it's just the one page, it's not the cutting plan, it's the DCR approval of the cutting plan, okay?
Right, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I just, that's not...
You can get, you can get a copy from Rebecca.
Okay.
Okay, next we have a request from Sawdust Coffee House for outdoor entertainment license. Anyone here? Peter here?
No, I don't see him on the call. Andrea, did you, does he know, he got the link, right?
Yeah, he was giving the link, he said he was gonna be here, I don't know what's going on.
Well, did anyone have any questions on the application?
I have a comment.
Yep?
There was, uh, Andrea sent out a new one today that had the hours of, the hours of the live entertainment that I wrote on the memo, we added this, Andrea added a spot on the application for not only the hours of operation, but the hours of the live entertainment, so he's asking for live entertainment from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday, and potentially Sunday's 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. All subject to the border health and COVID restrictions.
Right, but I did have, I did have a question on the new application, um, where it says description of premises to be licensed slash permitted, it's got coffee house with acoustic music, he's already got an entertainment license for the coffee house, he should have what he had in the original application for entertainment on the outdoor patio. So if we make a motion approving that, we'll have to stipulate that and, you know, fill it in there. Do the board have any questions or comments?
I think...
Okay, oh, Mike?
No, I don't have any questions, and if I don't hear any others, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the outdoor entertainment license for Sawdust Cafe for the hours, uh, listed, that were just listed by the town administrator. Um, contingent upon board of health approval, COVID-19 mitigations, and also, uh, stipulation on the permit that the premises includes the outdoor patio area, as, as, uh, the chair pointed out.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second, Chase.
Okay, Mary, how do you vote? Mary, yes. Ian, how do you vote?
Abstained from the vote.
Michael, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Chase?
Yes, yep.
And I vote yes, okay. Okay, next we have the town administrator's... Okay, yep.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and board members, my report's in front of you, um, the, the biggest item is the Community Development Block Grant, Micro Enterprise Loan Program. As you recall, we partnered with the town of Southbridge and Charlton to access some community, community development block grant funds through, um, the state, um, for COVID, and these would be microloans, two hundred and twenty-five, up to $2,500. Uh, so the full $250,000 was awarded to the three towns, and the town of Southbridge is preparing, uh, the application materials, they will be the lead community on the project and handle the application process. We've reached out to our business community to let them know, uh, that this is available. Eligible applicants will be, um, employers with five or fewer employers, uh, where one of those five is the owner. The business has to serve, uh, their constituency of low to moderate income, uh, folks, or the owner has to meet the low to moderate, moderate income guidelines to be an eligible applicant. And these funds are to be used for items such as rent support, utilities support, um, those things, but cannot be used for capital items, uh, or repairs. Uh, so basically, it's to address the loss of revenue due to COVID. So that more information will go out to the business community, and hopefully, we have two or three applicants when we, uh, propose this to the business community. We had several, several businesses express interest, and they seemed to be able to fit the criteria for an applicant. Um, moving, moving on in the report, um, the Public Safety Radio Project, we did have a meeting with many of the departments, that would be potential users. As you know, our radio system goes back, uh, a long way, and it is getting to the point, well, it's past end of life, it's well past end of life. So we're starting to work on a project, uh, to scope out a new radio system, one of the first, uh, proposals of the group is to put it on RFP for a consultant who would do a needs analysis, and then walk us through the rest of the project to acceptance and going live with a new radio system. So there'll be, uh, more on that as we, as we head into the summer and fall. Um, the pumpkin, pumpkin patch dates for the Federated Church are on the report, um, the police department also got a $10,000 wellness grant from Maya for new, uh, gym equipment for the public safety facility, so that's good news. Uh, the police chief search committee has met, and we're preparing to begin to review applicants and, uh, come up with a process to do the background checks on the selected candidate or candidates. Uh, we'll probably only do backgrounds on one to two of the finalists as we go forward. Um, we're also interviewing, uh, potential, uh, candidates or candidates for the Board of Selectmen Administrative Assistant position. Uh, we started today, we'll be interviewing throughout the rest of this week and into next week, and then, uh, I sent you the policies that you all adopted, subject to town council review, uh, those were minor tweaks, and those are now in the policy book for the police department. That is my report, I would, uh, I do have some other things under COVID, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board? I have a hearing, um, out of curiosity, are you interviewing in person or remotely for the, um, AA position, and what are you planning to do for the chief position?
Um, we're interviewing remotely for the administrative assistant position, and at least the initial interviews for the police chief will be remote, um, the finalists, there may be, the finalists may come to town hall, and then the board members would interview, um, remotely. We have a couple of board members that are very concerned about mixing in the public, so they will be remote no matter what, but there may be where the candidate is with me at town hall, and the meeting, the rest of the interviews with the selection committee are remote.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have questions or comments of Jeff? Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, next on the agenda, we have a request from Sally Green to utilize the grounds of the Sturbridge Senior Center for the Herb Fest on October 21st, 2021. Is Sally back on?
I think so, am I?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, so we canceled Herb Fest for this year due to COVID, and we're trying to advertise that fact with the next date and location, so I am asking for permission to use the Senior Center on August, uh, October 6th, 2021. Um, we would need to put the lawn for vendors, and, uh, um, in classroom. I did talk to, um, Table 3 about using their space since it's right next to my building, but that's a site of, um, weddings, so he, he said, you know, I can't have vendors set up on the lawn and then have two weddings going on, so I can understand that.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Sally, I just have a comment, um, someone had mentioned to me last year that some people were told to pack over at the American Legion, but the American Legion hadn't been asked for...
They had this asked, but the, the commandant did not tell the bartender that was on duty.
He gave miscommunication.
And it, the trickle-down effect didn't work.
Right, okay, glad to hear that. But the problem shouldn't be a problem because hopefully, we'll have the new parking lot done at 501 Main Street.
Where the hotel, was that a part, where the motel was, is that gonna be parking?
Yeah.
Awesome. That'll be...
So hopefully, it'll be, we're going out for the, uh, engineering, and hopefully, we'll get it done.
Yeah.
Now, if somebody...
So, Sally remembers it as the pit, Pink Haven, huh?
Yeah. I think only three of us do.
I have a question of regarding, um, any costs that might differ, like, we got to use the whole facility for free, we got our, our trash removal and porta-potties and all that, but I, Leslie had said there might be charges this year, so I just wondered if you could tell me what they might be.
Jeff, do you have any idea?
I don't know, but I'd be, uh, I, I'll get with the director and see what she was referring to.
Yeah, I think it might have been custodial, and, you know, she said it's ridiculous for you to do a trash removal, because then we have like two, two things in this huge dumpster, it was ridiculous, so...
We can coordinate that with the director and, uh, if necessary, come back to the board.
And what we've decided to do, and I've already reached out to Table 3 on this, is we're gonna do box lunches that would be pre-ordered and prepaid, so that we won't have to get all these food vendors, um, I think that'll be a lot easier, or ma, more manageable for everybody.
Sounds good. Anything else from the board? Is someone willing to make a motion then?
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to approve the request of Sally Green to host Herb Fest at the Sturbridge Senior Center on October 2nd, 2021, two, 2020, I believe.
No, 2021.
21.
Wow.
Conceding upon arrangements for insurance and a police detail.
Yep.
I'll second.
Second, Mary.
Okay, any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ike?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, Sally.
Thank you, I'm signing out.
Enjoy the night.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a consideration and possible action on a request for a water bill abatement for 61 Brookfield Road. Is Angie signing on?
Uh, we, she has the link, and I just emailed her a minute ago to see if she was joining the meeting, but I've not seen her join, uh, maybe she'll join later, if you wanna move on.
Well, we can, here. Next, we have consideration and possible concurrence on the appointment of Corey Gagir as a police officer to the Sturbridge Police Department at a starting wage of $27.23 per hour. Jeff, you wanna take this one?
I'd be happy to. Uh, Corey Gagir is on the meeting this evening, he's a recent graduate of the police academy, he put himself through the police academy, uh, he's been through, uh, the recruiting process with the police department, I had a chance to meet this young man, and I think he'd be an outstanding addition to the department, and I would ask if Chief Desert has any comments on Mr. Gagir.
Hey, Chief?
Good evening, board members, nope, I am just looking, uh, to have Mr. Gagir appointed tonight, he is a two-year UMass student of Boston, played baseball for two years, like, uh, Mr. Bridges said, he recently graduated the police academy, and he participated in our selection, selection process, rose to the top, and was the finalist, so we're looking forward to hopefully getting him on board and getting him started, uh, tomorrow.
Okay, Corey, is there anything you'd like to say?
I'd just like to say I can't wait for this opportunity to, uh, become a police officer in the town of Sturbridge, and I'm looking forward to meeting all of you, uh, in person and not over the internet, soon.
Okay, questions, comments from the board? Nope. Now, looking at your resume, Corey, it's, um, a lot of credit to you for going to the academy on your own initiative and everything, not often you see that.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question, I do have a question, though, are you going to move closer to Sturbridge because Blackstone is well beyond that 15 mile limit?
Absolutely, once I, uh, again, I put myself through the academy, so I just need a little bit of time to save up some money to, uh, to move out, and my girlfriend and I are already looking, so, absolutely.
Okay. Somebody wanna make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to concur with the appointment of Corey Gagir as police officer for the town of Sturbridge at a starting wage of $27.23 per hour, effective July 21st, 2020, Chase.
Mary? Oh, go ahead, Ian.
I'll second the person.
Okay. Any discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes, unanimous, so welcome. So welcome to town.
Thank you very much. Look forward to meeting you all.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Corey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. I believe this.
Do you need me to say anything else? Tonight, there was a few other things regarding the sergeants. If you have any questions, do you want me to say after that?
Could you please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, I did see that Angie had signed in.
Uh huh.
Angie, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, we can hear you, but we can't see you now.
I'm trying to figure this out, give me two seconds. Can you see me?
There you go.
Yes.
Hello?
Okay, now Angie, this is, I'm meeting at your request concerning your water bill. Would you like to tell us your story?
Yes, I've been over at this for over 20 years. And I just want to sort of say in regards to the water situation itself. I mean, I've paid my water bill consistently. I've never disputed it because I know it's user-based and it's on an enterprise fund. This particular bill in particular, I had issues with because it was literally an entire year's worth of a water bill that was from January till March, which isn't watering season. I mean, I could say if it went up $200, $300 and it was watering season, I can attest that to either the, you know, the kids left the water hose running or the, the lawn was watered, the plants or something of that nature. But it was in the middle of winter, there was no leaks. I, I know you have the report that Shane has presented in regards to a report. But there is no leaks. They gave me a pellet to put in my toilet when they came out to fix the water readings. And I put it in the toilet. It was, it wasn't any, there was no leak in the sense of nothing was coming out. I mean, it was little as, you know, when the water stains come to your toilet. But there was like a little streak and that was the extent of it. But not to the amount that it would have been a 700, I mean, ultimately an entire year. Usually my bill is about 200. I use about 20 to 30 cubic feet. And as I was looking at the chart, there was one point it was 400 cubic feet. I mean, that thing must have been running for 24 hours a day utilizing at least a five inch, um, a five inch tube for that amount of money to, I mean, that amount of cubic feet to come out in one day. I, I think for me in regards to the situation, if it had been reasonable, or I shouldn't say reasonable, but if it had made sense in regards to it was a significant, a double the increase. But this is quadruple the cost in regards to it. And I actually, I just thought this month's bill, this quarter's bill and this quarter's bill itself is about $200, $250 more than my average year. So it goes, the fluctuations from the gauges on that report go anywhere from the minimum of January 1st being zero cubic feet usage, January 2nd being five, to the highest being over 400 a day. So I, I am abating it because I believe there's something either wrong with the meter itself and/or the software system. Because the other piece of it that I'm attesting to is that I've talked to a few other friends who have similar issues where they're like, I don't understand what's going on with my water bill. And theirs have increased significantly. And I, there's going to be more people coming in that I'm aware of that are going to abate it within this cycle as well and last cycle relative to the water bill itself. So that's what I have to say. I mean, I'll answer questions in regards to it. But I ultimately, you know, wanted to appeal it and ask for an abatement because of the excessiveness and just the, the amount of, there's no way that a family of three, even if there was a toilet leak, could have used that much per cubic per day. I mean, I'd, I'd have to have my neighbors and, you know, two other families over and have each of us taking a shower for an hour and a half each to equate to over 400 cubic feet per day.
Okay, questions from the Board?
Um, I, I know, I just have a few comments. I mean, after I read this, it did seem extremely high for a family of three. I know it wasn't too long ago that we did have an abatement, I believe. Or I don't know how, I, I voted for the abatement, I think Mary Blanchard did too. But when it was just so much higher than what was typical. I know Shane said that toilet leaking is typically 95% of the time the cause. And he leaked it, he associated it with that when he looked at the data logs. But then when I Googled what a typical toilet leakage is, they said about $70 a month. I don't know what size family that is, but even then it would be like $210. And we're looking at about $450, not 760. So I don't know, I just feel like it is a real anomaly from, from that typical house's water bill, even with a leaky toilet. So I just wanted to add that. I don't know if I have the solution, but it seems, it seems quite high to me as well.
Okay, anyone else on the Board?
Oh, fine.
Did Shane test the meter or has the meter been tested at all or?
Um, I don't, the meters, they only came and took the reading. It has not been tested unfortunately due to COVID. I'm being financially savvy every time you have somebody coming in and we had to pay for the water bill before I could abate it. But I didn't, there's a charge for it to be tested and I, I at this point can't afford to. Charge to get it checked and tested. I know that they did come in and they put a meter onto the, or a device onto the meter and took out some information. I don't know if that was just retrieving the information or if it was a naturality testing. I'm assuming just retrieving the data.
Yeah, the meter.
Anyone else?
The meter was not tested.
Oh, Jeff?
Yeah, the meter wasn't tested, no.
The memo says costs take $50 and it gets reimbursed in the event it's found to be faulty. Otherwise, residents pay $50 to have it tested, that's under standing.
Actually, if you look at the regulations, the charge is actually $75.
I'm just looking at the email that was sent to Angie.
Yes.
On July, you know, our documents say it's 50, but I don't know if it's gone up.
Waited thing, right. But Angie, water did go through the meter. You know, the meter only records when water goes through it. Where it went, I know that other abatement that Mary referenced was really outstanding. And that was, I believe, only two people in the house, not even three. The practice of the Board has always been to deny these abatements unless it can be proved that somehow it's the town's fault. Okay, everybody complains about their water and sewer bill. Your, your water charge was 315, but then the sewer charge, you know, it's based on water was 446. So I don't see any extenuating circumstances here that would point to the fact that the town is at all liable.
Well, I.
Go ahead, Angie.
Oh, no, I mean, I guess I'm in regards to it. I mean, I read the regulations themselves and some of it, I mean, six point N says, if a meter becomes out of order and fails to register properly, a water customer shall be charged upon the average daily rate of consumption as determined by historic volume for the same quarterly bill. My historic volume, and I think you guys have it, has been in, this, you know, I, I'm not debating paying my water bill. There've been times that I've gotten charged for sewage when my kids were little. And I know we were spilling the swimming pool, the blow up swimming pools every day. But I paid the sewage bill and didn't dispute it because that was part of the process and we had used the water. I'm not disputing the water usage at all. I'm concerned and I'm saying that either something had happened, it didn't come into this house. Whether it's the meter and the, I mean, the family of three that you're talking about. I mean, I'll say I'll give you, I mean, say it's $80 a, a, a month for a leaky toilet. If you're calling it a family of three, it's myself and two kids. So it's not even two adults and a child. It, it, it's going from five, 10, 15 cubic feet at most to over 200 a day. That, where is it going? Even if the toilet was leaking, even if I had the toilet caught, you know, the plug stopped up, it would have had to have at least a five, I, I mean, the flow would have to be so extensive. I, I, I don't know how else to explain it to you guys and plead for consideration in regards to the situation. It's not an issue of I'm trying to get out of my water bill. I'm just trying to say fair is fair because something is going on with either the process of the meter and/or a glitch in the software if I'm, I mean, it's significant. I, I don't have a pool. I don't, I don't water in the winter. I mean, like, you know, the toilet has to be running. I mean, three toilets have to be running for the amount that I got charged for that water bill.
Angie, the section you referenced though has to do with, if, that would be the town's fault if there was something wrong with the meter or if there was something wrong with the lines and everything. But in this case, it's been reviewed by the DPW Director, Finance Department and Town Administrator. And they all determined, even based on the record, that there is, is no reason to give an abatement. And I don't know, when you were on the Board, if you ever sat through one of these requests. But we don't, I think the once in my entire time on the Board, we ever abated any. If it goes, if the water goes through the meter, you're charged. Leaks can be hard to detect. It may look like nothing, but it's a lot. When we had the little recent abatement come in, our DPW Director explained the volume on the leak. And in that case, it was, I thought, and Mary thought, that the volume of that water would have been seen if it had been flowing like that, leaking. But there was no evidence of it. So the majority, we denied the abatement request. So anybody else on the Board? Ian?
Um, I know that financially times are tough right now, but I would encourage you that if you feel that there is an actual error in the meter, to take the chance and have the meter tested. Because if you had hard evidence that it was an error in the meter, you could come before and you could recover this money. Without evidence of anything, we're basically just stuck with the facts we have. And it says it passed through the meter and it says it's correct. So that's kind of where we're left, stuck.
Mary? Um, I'm going to make a motion, I, I don't know where it's going to go. But in light of, Ian did bring up COVID, which is what I was going to bring up. I think these are very unusual times, it's a lot of hardship. We've already had extenuating circumstances for delaying the water bill. We've delayed our federal and state taxes. And in light of that, I'm going to make a motion that if the resident so wishes, we have the meter tested and, and we waive the fee associated with the testing of the meter. I don't think this sets a precedent in the indefinite future because again, this hardship with COVID. And if another abatement came during this time period, I think I would have a similar motion. We've already waived interest on late sewer bills. So there's already a tendency by us, the state government and the federal government to have extenuating circumstances and prolong due dates. And so my motion is to have the meter tested at this location if the resident requires the request and that we waive the fee associated there with regardless of the outcome.
Um, Mary, I know extenuating circumstances, COVID and everything. But most of this water flow occurred before we actually had the mandatory shutdown.
Oh, I know. Oh, I agree, but it's not, it's not a motion to abate. But the hardship of having the meter tested is not something that occurred in the winter. It's occurring now because if she wants to have it tested now, now is the state of hardship for COVID. So that's why, that's my reasoning and that's my motion.
Okay, does anyone seconding that motion?
Just a, just a quick second question. You said your current water bill you feel is out of whack right now. You said it's currently running higher than what you would expect?
The last quarter was $700 and it's typically 200. I just got the bill and it's 460, so it's about 200 over. Where before it was six, almost 700 over. So it went from 700 over, this time it's 200 over. I think for me and what I'm saying in regards to the other aspect of it is when the first quarter, if it had been 200, 150 over, I'm like, okay, you know, somewhere it has to be adjusted because it's beeping, right? So only the people on the water system pay for it. So you readjust the cost. But it's an entire year of my water bill in one quarter. That, that's why it became so obvious.
Yeah, I, then you know what? I'm going to second the motion with, because I do feel because of COVID and if your current water bill after you had the surge of 700 is higher, I, I have no problem seconding the motion, having the town test your meter.
But, um, so you're seconding, Angie, where do you get this 700 over? What number are you basing that on?
My bill typically is 200. I don't have it in front of me because I have to turn it in to pay for it. So I didn't get the return stuff. But it's, the bill was 762, I believe. I don't know if you guys, is that in your packet?
That's what it said, 62.
Yeah, $762.29.
Yeah, and usually I am about $200. So I, I go anywhere between, you should, I think Jeff might have given you my schedule of payments, how much I've paid or schedule of payments that I've done for the last five years. And, and it's been 200 to 25. I think the highest I've ever paid and I've lived here for over almost 20 years is 250.
The, our, I know you don't, in front of you, Angie, but the memo that we got from our Town Administrator says the prior two bills were 280.26 and 253.09. So it was already starting to go up. I don't know, I'm just saying it was 287 and 253, if this memo is correct. And I have no reason to think it wouldn't be.
And I'm wondering and thinking, I mean, yes, but it might have been so close to the numbers that I didn't notice the incremental change. But then when it went to, you know, 700 or 760, I know. But then when it went to, you know, seven hundred or seven sixty, I noticed it. Um, it could have been going up slowly and I just didn't notice it.
Yeah, I mean, you have plenty of bills that are under two hundred as well. We have a whole history of your prior bills.
I, I, I mean, I guess I'm, on average, about two fifty, um, per quarter that I typically pay.
Madam Chair?
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, to, uh, talk about the perception here that there was a huge amount of flow. The maximum, uh, day that, that this, uh, incident occurred, and it was very precisely between February twentieth and it just ended abruptly on, uh, April eighth. Uh, it looks like the, the, the peak flow for any day was a hundred and forty-five cubic feet. That's equivalent to three quarters of a gallon per minute, which is just a little swirl on a toilet. If, if the, uh, valve isn't heated properly, that happens all the time. It's very classic of a faulty toilet. Um, I mean, we can have the meter tested, but the chances of the meter being faulty are, um, because it's a positive displacement meter, it's, it's almost, uh, almost never, like, one in hundreds of thousands that these meters are tested to be and found to be faulty. That, to, uh, to overread especially. Usually when they get older, they'll underread, uh, the flow slightly, but only by, by, you know, a fraction of a percent. They're, they're very accurate meters and I, I, you know, the, the, uh, the chart since the water department have provided us, it, it appears like it's, uh, you know, it, it appears like it's a, a very slow leak. Uh, like, uh, for the most part during that period, it was less than a half a gallon per minute, which is really a small, uh, small amount of flow.
Half a gallon per minute?
Yep.
Oh, fine. I think a lot of pressure.
Yeah, uh, the maximum day, uh, at a hundred and forty-five cubic feet, that's like three quarters of a gallon per minute. That, uh, that's a very slow flow. I mean, I can drink that coffee in a minute. No, I'm kidding.
That's a lot of coffee.
I, I'm glad I said coffee and not beer, huh?
Let's not go there. Anything else?
It is a classic toilet leak, slow toilet leak, classic. I would, you know, that's, it shows, it has all the characteristics of that. It's not a large leak. But it is-
So we have them? No, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would encourage residents to, uh, have their, the in- internal parts of their, uh, their toilet tanks replaced periodically because that, it can get very expensive if, if they fail.
Angie, anything else? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. How do you vote, Mike?
Uh, uh, no, I don't, I, 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 I have to vote no.
Ian, how do you vote?
Um, also no.
Hey, Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ace, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote no. So the motion fails. Three against and two for. Okay, now we also need a motion on the abatement of the water sewer bill. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we, um, abate the bill and charge her the average of the three feeding months or, um, yeah.
For a second? Okay, no second, so the motion fails. Hey, Angie, sorry, but, you know, it's been the standing of the board.
Well, I'd say thank you for my time, but you guys, I mean, at some point you're gonna have to start looking at some of these abatements outside of the, 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 the norm of, you know, this is what we've done. Because there, there's a process, I mean, it's an appeal. And if it's, you know, it's a standard response, then it, there's no point of an appeal.
Well, Angie, we do have the, uh, water and, uh, water bylaws and everything and it spelled out clearly in there. And we do look and discuss and weigh each request for an abatement. Okay, and it's stated, if town's fault or something out of the ordinary, you know, it may be a different outcome. But that is the, um, town's policy.
Yeah, it, it, I, I, I don't disagree. I, I'm not arguing the policy, I'm just arguing the consistency.
Well, have a good night, Angie, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary?
Yes, Mary?
Um, for another night, I'm gonna request an agenda item where we pursue the possibility of, I don't know if this would create too much of an administrative task, so it's something we can discuss. But, um, if there's any way to warn, um, after one month of usage, to warn, um, residents that their bill is much, much higher than their norm so that it can at an earlier point in the process alert them to, for example, a toilet leak or a leaky hose before it gets to the point where it's seven hundred and fifty dollars. I think what we voted for, that was over a thousand dollars. I mean, I'd like to think that there's some way we might be able to tell them, look, you're going through a lot more water than is yours norm. And if that can be caught a little sooner rather than quarterly, because people are coming in, and I think it happened to that other couple, if we could find a way to alert them after one month, then maybe they're paying a couple hundred dollars more, but they're not paying five hundred or a thousand dollars more than what they use. So if, maybe if we can just look into that. We, we might not be able to do that, but if we are able to do that, I think it would be a good service for our residents. I think it could create a-
Okay, so when things quiet down, it's worth having a discussion, finding out how the meters work, can they red flag after a day or after two days? Or is it at the end of a month or at the end of the, uh, three-month cycle it kicks up?
That was awesome, thank you.
Yeah, good point.
Okay, so next?
Yeah.
Next on the agenda. We have consideration and possible action on a request for the removal of a tree at the privilege public safety complex. And we have a letter from, or tree warden that, I mean, the Assistant Tree Warden, General Walston, visited the tree in a serious decline and they had no issue with taking it down. And the tree warden goes on to explain that due to the limited space between the sidewalk and utilities in that location, replanting of anything other than grass or some form of ground cover would not be advisable. That area offers little opportunity for proper root growth for anything larger. Any questions from the board?
As-
Somebody want?
Yeah, I just, do we know if the, uh, tree warden has, uh, determined that it's a dangerous tree from the picture? It looks, uh, kind of, uh, you know, half-dead and, uh, would need to be cut down anyhow. It's not a dangerous tree and it's a, it, it doesn't look like a healthy, uh, public shade tree to me, so I think it, you know, it can, it could be cut down without, uh, you know, any hearing or so forth. I didn't, I don't know if there's been a hearing, but if it were, if it were a healthy, uh, shade tree, then the tree warden would have to hold the public hearing before it would come to the Board of Selectmen upon appeal.
But it's, it's not-
But the tree warden determined that it's-
It's not, yeah, it's not a public shade tree and he determined that it's in serious decline.
It's, it's, uh, is that publicly owned, is, is that land owned by the town? It's been-
Yes.
Yeah, but the, the trees on the town common are all public shade trees. And that, because it's on-
It's not a-
Yeah.
Not on the common, Mike, the public safety complex.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, but it's, I would, well, I would dispute that it's, whether or not it's a public sh- it, it's a shade tree. The thing is, is if the tree warden's determined that it's, you know, it's a dangerous tree or not a healthy tree, it could be cut. Otherwise, there would have to be a public hearing.
Now, who determines it? So somebody willing to make a motion?
I'm sorry, I'm just not finding the memo from the tree warden. Where is it?
It's on page one thirty-four.
Yeah.
Okay. I know I saw it at one point, but I can't find it now. One thirty-four?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right at the back side of the memorandum.
Yeah.
Is this the same one that turns that beautiful red? It's one tree by the safety complex that's-
Oh, no, that one's down further. I, I would definitely vote no on that one.
It, it's like my favorite stirrery, when I buy.
Yeah, the tree is twenty in the fall.
Right, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the bottom line is I, I don't have a pro- if the tree warden doesn't have a problem cutting the tree, I don't have a problem cutting the tree. Yeah. But I just want to make sure that, that we followed the process. And I, I believe that, you know, it, it doesn't look like a healthy tree to me, so.
Hey, did you find it, Mary?
Yeah. I just didn't know, like, the tree, some of the leaves are on of it and some of it are off. Is, is that the dead part of the tree or is it just taken in the fall where some of the tree, some of the leaves fell off and some of the leaves didn't? I don't know, I mean, I hope, are we gonna replace the tree and plant another one?
Not there.
No, he doesn't, he just because it's a small area. There's not enough room for good root growth.
Okay. Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Is somebody, somebody willing to make a motion?
Yeah. Uh, this is Mike. I'll make a motion to approve the removal of the ash tree on the right side of the public safety building.
For a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, how do you vote, Ian?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote? No. Ace, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is four to one. Okay. Next, we have consideration and possible action on accepting a donation from William Petro in the amount of sixty-four dollars to the fire department purchases. And you all have the, um, letter that Mr. Petro wrote to the fire department. He requested re-identification signs and he wrote a check and he said if it was worth it, then if needed, the extra could go to the fire department.
This is Mike. I'll make a motion to accept the donation of sixty-four dollars, uh, from William Petro for the fire department with gratitude from the Board of Selectmen.
Angie, for a second?
Second.
Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ace, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda? What, Andrea?
Ace seconded it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on approving a multi-year electricity purchase agreement. Jeff, you wanna give a little synopsis, please?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, we have, we are currently in the final months of a three-year agreement for electricity purchases for all the town buildings, including Burgess School, but not including Tantasca High School. Our electricity consultant, our energy consultant, Beth Greenblatt, has been in the process of rebidding the electricity in the, uh, expectation of entering into a new long-term agreement. Uh, the bid results, uh, because of the way the energy pricing is done, the, the prices you see in the packet are as of the ninth of July. If you were, if the board would choose, uh, we would refresh those rates tomorrow and select one of two vendors, uh, either Direct Energy or Constellation. Those two seem to be back and forth the lowest price and provide the lowest long-term price. So, uh, the energy consulting is, is recommending, allow the board to authorize the town administrator to lock in a price tomorrow after refresh and after consultation with the board chair. Uh, that, because we won't have final pricing unless we do a refresh and then we could lock in. If the pricing goes haywire for some reason tomorrow, there's no need to act. We can do a refresh later on and come back and look at pricing again in a few weeks. This agreement does not expire till November. Or we could choose to lock in on a low, at a shorter term if we believe the short-term rates are more beneficial than locking into a long-term rate. Right now, the risk is that the rates will go higher, not that the rates will go lower. We're seeing historically low energy rates. Uh, so locking in now is advantageous as of July ninth. Uh, those, that may change if we refresh tomorrow, but we're not expecting that. So that's kind of where we are, uh, with electricity. Um, we would get a new three-year contract and lock in these rates for those three years based upon tomorrow's refresh of the pricing. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, this is Mike. I, I've got a question, uh, I did, uh, it looks like from Beacon's, uh, really great, uh, analysis here, uh, that we use about three and a half million kilowatt-hours of electrical energy a year. And I was looking at, at the, uh, the current rates that are there and to go all green would add about a one point six four mil to that, to the rate. And that would cost the town, if we went all green energy, about five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars a year extra. I don't know, I just throwing that out there so you'd see, and I don't wanna create a long discussion about it because we could go on forever whether or not we wanna go green. But if I'm correct and it's, it's under six thousand dollars a year to go all green energy, uh, we are a green community and, I don't know. Just throwing it out there for discussion.
Any comments, Jeff?
No, uh, I had the same question. What's it, what's the, uh, Massachusetts required mix of re- re- uh, reusables, renewables? So the, the compliant energy, which is the lowest price, has the, the necessary renewable, uh, requirements met for power purchase in, in Massachusetts? We don't have any requirements due to our green community standard to- in Massachusetts? We don't have any requirements due to our green community standard to purchase all green energy. Um, but if the board makes a policy decision that they want to buy green energy, uh, that pricing is available, and we can compare the two tomorrow and see what the board chair wants to do, uh, within some parameters maybe the board wants to set this evening. We are currently not purchasing all green energy. We are in, purchasing what's called compliant brown, which means it meets the state's mix of preu, renewables, but it's not a hundred percent green.
That okay, Mike?
Yeah. I guess, I guess what I'm asking for, what, what policy, is, is there any, any, uh, policy that the board might want to, or should we go with the lowest rate available? Uh, you know, I, I just wanted to throw out there whether, that we do have the option to go all green, and, uh, you know, if, if the majority of the board wants to do that, I would vote for it, uh, but I would certainly support whatever the consensus of the board is.
Mary? Well, um, now that, thank you, Mike, for raising that. Uh, if we are able to compare figures, I, I think it's best looking and comparing the two. I mean, if we can go green, that would be really awesome for our environment. I don't know how quickly we can get numbers to make some type of comparison, but if it's relatively soon, then I would support, um, having the, uh, discussion of comparing the two.
Jeff, what do you think the timeline would be on, Ian, to give?
We could re, uh, we could put this back on the agenda for August third. We could ask the consultant to do a refresh in the morning and compare the pricing for all green versus the brown energy and util, and taking our consumption rate or utilization rate and see what the dollar value is for both. And then I could present that to you on August third, and you can decide if the dollar value difference is worth the policy decision.
I would support.
Any comments on that? I don't think we have anything to lose, and I think that's a good idea, instead of trying to figure out a policy tonight, not knowing any numbers. So, we will, um, reschedule discussion and possible vote on this at our next meeting. That satisfactory to the board?
I like that approach, and thank you, Mike, for raising it and bringing it to our attention, and Jeff for the, um, comparison.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff was right on top of it.
Well, thank you.
Okay, next, old business, consideration and possible action on salary adjustments for the sergeant, disturbance department during the interim chief period. Chief, I think you ought to be a selectman, you have to sit there that long.
It's not a problem.
Oh, God, the pay is not as good as whatever you're getting right now.
I didn't mean, obviously, it's more good.
You can get the same thing we get. Okay, um, hey, Jeff and Earl, I do appreciate, you know, pulling this report together. However, I was looking for a little more detail. Um, when you're talking about review, such as pursuit, use of force, injury to finger, and injured on duty, to name a few, are assigned to the lieutenant for review before it goes to the chief, and assignments are now being assigned to sergeant for the first and second year of review. Um, I just maybe would have expected, you know, how many pursuits have we had in a year? How many injured on duty? I can't recall the last injured on duty that came through the board. How many injured prisoners? It's just, it's just my, it's my viewpoint. I like details, but that's fine.
I would, I would say that, um, I, I could be wrong. I don't believe the injured, uh, prisoner injury reports, pursuit reports, use of force reports all get forward to the Board of Selectmen. It gets reviewed and held internally here in case there's any lawsuits down, down the road.
Oh, no, no, Earl, I understand that. I just meant the number. I'm not looking who or how, oh, you know, do we have ten pursuits? Do we have one? You know, just, just to give me a little more.
Well, I could, within the last month, I can say that, but it, it, it varies, but I could, I could get numbers.
No, 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 that's, that's fine. We're going to vote tonight, okay? But I thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Mary?
Um, I think I'm being repetitive, but, um, I, I continue to support the price increase, uh, the wage adjustment for the three sergeants in question. I mean, obviously, we're down a chief, and, um, acting chief, the third has stepped into those shoes, but he has duties that are now being by other people. I mean, to me, that just sounds reasonable. If he could do it all, then we, we shouldn't have had all the positions that we had to start with. So, I, I think if we don't, I think the best way is always internally, if we can agree, because otherwise, I feel like we're inciting a grievance, and if it goes to that, then the decision's made by somebody else, you know, an arbitrator. And I thought that, I believe it was a fifteen percent adjustment, spread over three people. I, reasonable, and again, um, without doing it, to me, we're just inviting a grievance, um, within those, uh, within that bargaining unit, because those duties are getting performed, and they're not lieutenants. So, they're, they're working out of their job description. So, I, I, again, I would support it.
So, does somebody want to make a motion, Ian?
I just have one question. Um, I was curious what Earl thought the duration of this would be. Um, how long is it going to take for them to return to normal as far as?
That, I would, I defer that to Mr. Bridges, because it's going to be the selection process for when the, the chief is ultimately hired. Um, we're still down a, a second lieutenant that hasn't been built since November twenty-eighteenth, and the sergeants took that upon them. They took that additional administrative duties back, back then and have been doing that. Now, there's an additional open, so it created another line of administrative duties that had to be cycled up. But as soon as we can get our administrators back in place, that's when it will end.
Jeff, the way the agreement's written, um, let me just make sure. It would be upon return to regular duty of a department lieutenant, just one. Once one lieutenant is reestablished, then the, uh, period of enhanced pay would terminate.
And I think, Jeff, I think I read something in here that says that, that this, uh, this situation's po, policy won't, won't be, in any future negotiations, won't be, uh, used as past practice or anything like that, 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 uh, when this contract comes up for renegotiation, uh, we could come up with a, uh, you know, better defined, uh, policy as to how, uh, when there's a, you know, some, when somebody's working out a grade, what happens. It, it seems, in this particular contract, it seems like it's not as well-defined as it is in some other contracts that I've seen. You know, I think, I think wha, whatever happens should be negotiated in the future, and it's my understanding that this current situation will not impact any future contract negotiations. Did I read that correctly?
That is correct. The union.
Yes, Mike, it's right.
Go ahead, Mary, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, that is correct. We did negotiate.
It's on page one-seventy.
Yeah.
Won't set precedence or past practice out of the agreement.
Yeah, I understand, but I wanted to make a point.
Okay, so, does somebody want to make full motion, then?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement between the sergeants of the Sturridge Police Department, the Sturridge Police Association, and the town for the temporary increase in the rate of pay to the sergeant in question, and this shall be without prejudice, precedent, or past practice for any future, um, negotiations. Uh, what is the effective do we have there?
It, yes, it's retroactive to May fourteenth, twenty-twenty.
Retroactive to May fourteenth, and it shall end with the assumption of, of one full-time lieutenant. Is that right, Earl? Did I say that?
Yes, that's my understanding of it, yes.
Yes, and it, it's also right in the agreement, Mary.
Okay, as stated in the agreement.
I will second that motion.
Okay, any more discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Gary, how do you vote?
Gary, yes.
Ace?
Yes.
And I vote yes, five to nothing. Okay. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, next, under old business, we have Old Mill Pond Dam update. Jeff?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and board members. At the last meeting, uh, Selectmen Supernat asked for kind of an update on what's going on with Old Mill Pond Dam. Um, as you know, the town was awarded ownership of this dam about a year ago by the state due to their research and our acquisition of the adjacent properties some time ago. Um, they did an initial evaluation through PAR engineering back in two thousand and eighteen and established some worrisome details about the existing condition of the dam, and subsequent to our taking ownership notified us that we are responsible for doing certain evaluations, inspections, and at some point enhancements or repairs to the dam. Um, they sent a letter on February third notifying that the dam is non-compliant and has certain issues that we need to address based upon the two thousand and eighteen PAR engineering report. Uh, and then on March third, I sent a letter asking for an extension of time for the town to take this on and do this work, and they awarded it on March tenth, and subsequent to March tenth, the world turned upside down. Uh, so now we're in the process of gathering up all these loose eggs that have been rolling around for the past three months and revisiting those. We did get the extension, and we've been communicating with the state on what's necessary. Uh, the DPW director is seeking quotes to do the phase one inspection. We have one quote from an engineering firm, and, uh, Mr. Jackson will be getting another quote to do the inspection report. We do have till February of twenty, uh, excuse me, uh, is due in September. Uh, we can get an extension on that. The state is very flexible at this point with all these dates due to COVID and, and finances and all those things. It is our long-term goal to breach the dam as we had for others in town, um, going forward, but that's kind of where we are now. We're getting quotes to do the phase one inspection of the dam. I'd be happy to answer any questions. There is a co-owner, uh, so we do have to work with the co-owner on all these things, and we'll be making contact with them over the next week or so to see what capabilities they have. As a business owner in town, many of their resources are probably tied up or exhausted trying to get through the last several months. So, we'll see what, where they are and bring back, uh, some additional information to the Board of Selectmen.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Um, has, have, have we, uh, or anybody researched the, the water rights, uh, in this area of the river? Uh, because, uh, I, because when you breach the dam, you have to take into account who might have, uh, control over the, the water rights and, and so forth. So, that's just, uh, something to look into before we, uh, move forward on breaching it, and, and also, uh, you know, I, I don't know, you know, breaching the dam will, will involve some environmental studies and so forth, if that's the course we take. And, uh, it may be, may or may not be, uh, politically, uh, popular if some people like the Mill Pond and so forth. And so, we have got to take, take a close look at all those aspects before we move forward. But I appreciate that the town administrator has gone through and, and responded.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Supernat. Yes, we, uh, it's a big deal to breach a dam. I think the last one was ten years in the making to get to a point of actually being able to do it. So, it's not to be taken lightly, nor would we. It would be in consultation with the board and all the appropriate committees and through the necessary public process. Uh, we're just getting started on what we need to do with this thing, and we'll bring back more information to the board.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, next, under old business, COVID-nineteen update, Jeff?
Yes, tha, thank you, Madam Chair. At our last meeting, we talked about reopening Town Hall to full hours. We are still not there yet. Our biggest hurdle to that effort is cleaning of the buildings. Um, we have three part-time custodians that could clean Town Hall, COB, the library, and the public safety building. And we can't ramp up their hours too much, or that puts them into a full-time status, which changes their status. So, we have looked at how do we handle full-time, because the, the need would be each time we're open to the public, we do a clean of the buildings, particularly the public spaces, the restrooms, all the touch points and so forth. So, Robin is proposing that we pull the, the town custodian from the library, and we engage a cleaning service to work with the library director, uh, at the library through COVID. Uh, they want to open or have staff in the building six days a week and potentially seven, and as we get into August, they actually want to have the, the immediate area as you walk in, the circulation desk area, open to the public. Uh, but some of the building, the children's area and other portions still closed off. So, Robin has reached out to a cleaning, three cleaning services, and I, and I sent this late to you all today. I don't know if you have a chance to see it, but we would engage cosmic cleaning of South Bridge, and they are proposing to do an overall clean of the building each day for fifteen-hundred-and-thirty dollars a week. Now, we don't need it every day right now, and we don't need every part of the building cleaned, but at some point, when the library does open to the public and all those areas are open to the public, we would need that intensive cleaning per day, uh, throughout the week. So, what we are asking is that the board authorize us to engage this cleaning service for up to fifteen-hundred-and-thirty dollars a week, paid for through COVID funds that we still have available, uh, up until the COVID issue is, is resolved, and we can go back to using our own cleaning crews, uh, in that building. So, that would be our COVID request, and once we engage this service and get the library under this contract, uh, we can then open COB in Town Hall every day and have custodial services available to refresh each building once it's closed to the public at the end of the day, uh, COB in Town Hall. So, that is kind of where we are. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, but making sure the buildings are cleaned after every public day is important to the staff, and I think it's important to the public as well. We just don't have the staff available to handle four buildings every day.
Mary? Well, I just want to say that I fully support it, because that's exactly what the money was supposed to be used for the thing. So, to me, it's, it's a win-win for the staff and the public.
Okay.
Okay, my only question is going to be where are the funds coming from, but you already addressed that. Okay, anyone else? Okay, any other old business, Ian?
Can, I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, yes.
Can I, can I, do I need a motion for that, or is everybody cool with that, or can I get a motion, or? get a motion or? Just put it on record that, you know, when I spend $1,530 a week, someone's like, hey, what are you doing that for? You know, something.
I'll make a motion that we support our town administrator's request to infer the sum of only $1,500 for cleaning purposes from our COVID-19, um, government reimbursement.
Thank you.
Second, Mike.
Hey, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ace?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Anyone else have any other old business? Ian?
No.
Mike?
No.
Ace?
No.
Mary?
Yeah, I just have old, old, old business that kind of predates Jeff, so I may as well raise it tonight. Um, whatever happens with the E, the DEP was going to do additional testing on the Gilpin Road, um, of their water, uh, determine whether or not they find Casella to be the responsible party. I guess that's the buzzword. And, um, I know that they found Casella to be the responsible party for that neighborhood in Charleston and, um, that Casella ended up having to pay for town services. And I know they weren't at that point, but I was just curious if the DEP is continuing to test the water of, um, the Gilpin Residence well. Um, we kind of haven't heard anything about it, I want to say maybe a year, maybe last spring. So just some kind of correspondence from them. I don't know if they dropped the ball or if COVID put off testing. I knew they were gonna engage in some more testing, so.
Can I make?
Yes, checking. Jeff?
Yeah, I, uh, I reached out to the state. What's the date of this email? February of 2020. Um, so they were working with the U.S. Geological Survey, has been involved as part of a joint effort with Mast Deep to investigate the bedrock aquifer around the Gilpin Road in Stirbridge. Uh, they tested three bedrock wells at the South Bridge landfill and one bedrock well at the South Bridge Airport. Uh, let me see, the South Bridge, the information. Yeah, so I'll, I'll have to follow back up with her to see where that got left, but they're looking to place a monitoring well somewhere between the Stirbr- or the South Bridge landfill and the Gilpin Road to see if there's a, you know, what that interstitial water looks like. So let me follow up with her and I'll get back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, that's the only thing I, the only thing I understood is what you just said because that, um, would, you know, if she, they can break it down and make it a little less, um, legal, that would be good, because I don't know what they were testing.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have any other old business? Hey, new business? Ian?
No.
Ace?
I have none.
Mike?
No, I have none.
Mary?
No.
And I have none. Okay, correspondence? Mike, you got the list?
Yes, I do. We've got, uh, upcoming changes times three from Charter Communications. The first letter was on, uh, July 1st and it describes upcoming changes. Uh, they're gonna add the Big Ten Network, uh, and, uh, to, what tier is that? Oh, the sports tier. And then, uh, around August 1st, the American Heroes Channels will be added, uh, and, uh, Discovery Family Channels, Science Channel will be added and, uh, all, all on Tier 2. Uh, oh, uh, oh, they're on Tier 2. They're gonna be moved down to Tier 1, which is, I guess, a good thing.
That sounds good to me. Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, but, uh, the other thing is, uh, the programming fees. Uh, we got a letter on, uh, dated July 5th, uh, that shows that there's gonna be increases in fees, uh, a dollar fifty increase in, uh, the select tier, uh, Spectrum Silver will increase in a dollar fifty and Echo Gold will increase to a dollar fifty. We, uh, uh, I guess the, uh, the surcharge will, is about the same as it was, two, two dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, and, uh, the last letter we got, oop, this July 1st again, uh, the last letter we got was, uh, they're adding a, uh, a local broadcast, uh, company, uh, WBTS, Channel 3. I don't know if that's Hartford or not, I'm not sure. And then, uh, and if you have any questions, you can contact Charter at, uh, johnmeyer@charter.com. So that's, those are the three letters we got and was from, all from Charter and, uh, correspondence.
Okay, anyone else have any correspondence? Okay, next, we have review of the minutes of July 6th. Any comments, corrections?
Uh, just some, I've got a minor addition at the bottom of the first page, uh, throughout the rest of the, uh, the very, very last paragraph there, it, you, just before dialing, if you could put Vice Chair, dialing. Hope everyone had a-
I didn't hear the page number and I also don't have the page numbers, but can you just tell me the subject?
No, I said the very first page of the-
Oh.
-the minutes, under public service announcement.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Just before where it says dialing, just pu- put the word Vice Chair, dialing.
Sure.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Andrea, also in that same little paragraph, and apologize for not making-
I know, you're going here.
You are?
I can see it.
Yeah. It should be-
I'm getting wrong.
-town meeting.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And then, um, period after reason, and then a capital F on she, and then apostrophe because of the contractions. She is.
I think I completely skipped editing this paragraph.
I think I've been-
Say that again, Andrea? I completely didn't even edit that paragraph. That's just like my notes from that night. I think I started, like, writing these minutes at present.
That's okay. I thought you'd do it just to see if we're sharp. And then on page-
Yes.
Page 223, the, um, last paragraph at the bottom.
What's the subject matter?
Um, well, it's all under discussion about the equine place.
Okay.
Uh, sentence says Vice Chair, dialing stated she is not committed to. It should be N door E N as opposed to I N. That's it. Anyone else have anything? Okay, is there a motion then to approve this amended?
No move, Mary Dowling, July 6th meeting minutes.
Your second?
Thanks, Supernat.
Okay. Ian, you are saying right words here.
Correct.
Hey, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ace, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I will, yes, so 4-0-1. Okay, next, we have citizens, oh, Jeff?
Just to circle back, did we address the Sados Cafe outdoor entertainment item? Did that get approved or did we jump over that?
They approved it.
They approved it? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but we gotta, we have to straighten out on what he's asking for as far as the outdoor patio.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
He flipped it back and forth.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, no problem. Okay, citizens forum?
Let me check the phone. Good evening, this is the Board of Selectmen meeting. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in the public forum? Hello, is there anybody that would wish to speak in the public forum? There is no one on the line, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a motion then to adjourn?
No move.
Ace, Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ace, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, everyone, and-
Thank you.
-it's cool. Oh, Jeff?
No, I said thank you.
Have a great week. Oh, bye, everybody, God bless.
Bye.
Bye. Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye.